For Richard Sands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I call others?
Yes, let's do that. There's gonna be a lot. Now we got Mr. Jones on the phone.
Hello there.
Hello, Mr. Jones, how are you? Good. We, we're just getting going. We've started the pledge of allegiance, so we're gonna go to welcome.
Okay, Mary Manning.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
And Randall is out some with August.
All right, do you have any motions to approve agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you. I have a motion by Keel, Stephen Myler. Discussion. All right, vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And Jones.
Yep.
And we have a motion for minutes from eleven sixteen twenty-one.
I'll move.
One second. Second, O'Hara. All right, vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Jones.
Yep.
And we have no bills submitted for payment. So, next item, we've got section in here for public comments. Anyone who would like to speak on any non-agenda items, right now is your chance. You have a couple minutes to do that, um, five minutes per speaker. So, if you'd ever like to come to the podium and talk on any non-agenda. All right, well, um, next item, visitors to the recognition of the Hartford Bike and Rec Committee. And, um, what we want to do with this is Hartford Bike and Rec Committee is, is going to basically disband or stop, stop doing what they've been doing for years. They've put in a ton of effort over the years and made bike trails and everything that's gone around this community fantastic. And, um, part of the reason that they're disbanding and, and a big part of the reason is that later tonight we're appointing our, our Park and Rec Board. And that Park and Rec Board is going to take on that responsibility along with some of those other things out there. So, um, we wanted to take a minute and, um, appreciate them and thank them for all of their service and everything they've done. Our trail system here in Hartford is fantastic. Kind of one of those, almost taking gems. If you didn't, uh, if you aren't familiar with it, you haven't been around it, that trail system is fantastic. The planning, the work and the thought that has gone into that has been, um, second to none. So, well, thank, each and every one of you has been a part of that, so, that. We will, we have some plaques for each of you. We're gonna get a picture, and then we're gonna get a picture of all of you that come over here tonight. So, first one I got, it's for Lerson. Troy. Canada, there you go. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Do you have a lot?
I think we have a lot.
We'll get the whole group.
All right.
All right, Warren, Warren two. Warren, you've been on this, a lot of you have been on this for a long time. Troy, do you have some background on that?
Warren was member number one, I was member number two, and everyone else was shortly thereafter.
Two thousand nine when we started.
Two thousand nine, yeah. That's fantastic. Um, Carrie couldn't be here tonight, so we don't have Carrie. Is she gonna mat me? And... Carrie's with me, Dave Lerson. Thank you, Dave. Thank you for that. And Kevin, Kevin, I don't know Kevin, to be honest.
Kevin Neistat wasn't able to be here.
Wasn't able to be here? I probably recognized him when I saw him, but I don't know if I know Kevin.
Harsh kid. Or, no.
All right, we can have all of you, I have somewhere near the flag or something like that, whatever, choose the things. Grab a picture of all of you.
Marcus.
No.
He used to be our guy.
He used to be.
Yeah, he used to be a guy. And Walter Moore. All right. Good luck.
Thank you. All right, some of the application here is appearing. We've got second reading order seven twenty. No changes to this from the first reading?
Nope. Nope, no changes.
Make the motion to approve second reading order instead of form.
Second.
Discussion. Vote. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
And Jones.
Yep.
All right. Next up, we got resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, transfer contingency.
Make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, transfer contingency.
Second. Discussion. Vote. Brennaman?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones.
Yep.
All right, so we got first reading order seven twenty-one, supplemental appropriation.
Make the motion for first reading order seven twenty-one. Second.
Discussion.
My only question, I was surprised at, uh, I was surprised at the sheriff's increase.
Yeah, I know, we.
You were surprised?
Damien gets paid a lot.
No, it's not, it's not necessarily that I was surprised, but I didn't, I didn't know that the quality, the quality must have increased that much.
I'm sure it did.
With this man.
I'm sure it did.
I mean, he's gotta be one click away from running that old barn. How many years did you have in service?
Uh, since two thousand seventeen, so three, four, not very long.
Is, is, was it the hours that jumped?
You know, it's the difference in pay, cause we, um, like when Phil was here earlier, we paid Damien's full salary. Prior to that, we paid Phil's full salar, full salary, so it's a difference in what he makes versus what he pays. Yeah.
Pretty easy.
All right, we got a motion and a second on that. Any other discussion? All right, vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now we got order seven twenty-two, first reading your district team of the voting wards. As you talked about in the last meeting, I agree.
Yes, yes, so at the last meeting, we went over, um, our alternative number four, which is what we had asked the Congress to come up with. That was looked over by the council president there, um, consensus to go with that. So, in your packet is basically the ordinance that would adopt the map that's in your packet, and that would be alternative four. It keeps all ward members sitting in their same wards. It spreads it out more evenly, you know, the wards differing to our census. It does have, um, the lowest population in Ward Three, which we kind of talked at the last meeting, that that's kind of a good thing, cause we think with the active developments there, that will grow. Ward One as well is the next one with the least amount, and, um, it has an active development too, so we figure this one might help absorb some of our growth too.
Yeah, all three of them, if you could look at the, at Ward Two. It's memorable.
I'll put the cleanest version I've seen.
Yeah, for sure.
From all these. All right, do we have a motion to approve first reading of that?
I'll make a motion for first reading order seven twenty-two.
One second. Further discussions? Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones.
Yeah.
All right. All right, now we're gonna move into the review approve. We've got four different groups on here, and, uh, for cannabis applications, several different, kind of some different nuances with, with each one of these out there. So, um, gives us a chance to learn a little bit more as we're going. So, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna take them, the order up there on here. And, uh, what I'll do is probably have each one of you, you know, have your rep come up for a minute, talk a little bit, just kind of a brief background. And then we'll give the council some time to ask few questions about your application and, um, and, and kind of go through, if there's some questions we can't get answered tonight, we'll, we'll make sure we work through those and get those movements on. You know, and I think, yeah, what we'll do is we'll just take them one at a time. So, first one we got up is for the Code Cannabis, here it was. Right here. Vote. Vote. Please state your name and add a, a little announcement.
I'm sorry, my name is?
Name and where you live.
Uh, my name is Carlos Jackson, and I reside in Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Howdy, Carlos.
We, the Code Cannabis, are proposing a rezone of our lot. We would like to split the lot down the middle to keep the grow facility in light industrial and the dispensary rezoned to community commercial. Our intent, when this lot is split down the middle, is to fence the area surrounding the grow facility, excuse me, the grow facility so that only owners and employees will have access to this piece of the property. Upon the final approvals, we plan or hope to have the building completed and ready for opening in six to seven months. This facility will also encompass our manufacturing plant. We will, excuse me, we will offer customers and dispensaries around South Dakota different strains of cannabis with types of concentrates and additions to various types of edibles. We plan to use all organic ingredients and have, which have no harmful effects to the community. We also have been in contact with Sioux Falls landfill for proper disposal of our byproducts. We will also hire twenty to thirty employees between both facilities and plan on vigorous training before we start. Again, upon final approving, we have a cannabis company that is hired to properly set up our grow facility and our manufacturing rooms. As seen on the blueprints, cameras are located around the building and in all rooms with the exception of the bathrooms. Lights around the outside of the building will also be led twenty-four seven, and all doors will be accessed by a scan key to record who is coming in and out and going each day. A twenty-four hour video alarm system will be, will be in use, and a security company will be hired to patrol the lots during our hours. In addition, we will have security guards properly placed at our front door along with, with an employee to scan ID of every customer's driver's license and medical card. In closing, we would like to thank you for your time today, and we look forward to building a great partnership and joining the community of Hartford.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. We need to start with, um, with Tom. Tom, as you, you've reviewed all of these, with my understanding?
Not the business plans.
Not the business plans.
Right, the applications.
Yep.
And, uh, I think the issue that was raised is that they're gonna need to replat and rezone that property. Because of the type of facility, they want to have both the, uh, manufacturing and the dispensary. So, they're gonna have to replat that and rezone half of it, or whatever portion the dispensary would be on. So, and Teresa and I had talked about that, and it seems that they meet all the other requirements for licensure, but they'll need to have that. So, you could either table or approve the license contingent upon the rezoning process, which is, you know, takes probably three months. By the time the, uh, the plat's done and it goes through planning and zoning through here for two, um, readings plus publication and forty days after that, so. But they, they appear to meet all the other requirements from, uh, for the application or for the licensure, uh, once the zoning and plating takes place, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, right now, we only allow dispensaries in community commercial?
Community commercial or essential business, it's gotta be a commercial district, not light industrial.
Why didn't we, why didn't we include it in light industrial?
I don't know why we did. That was the discussion, that the dispensaries would be in commercial, cause they'd be more of a retail outlet and selling like a retail business. And we wanted grow facilities and testing to be in industrial zones.
So, if, so if that, if, if the gist behind the retail establishment not being in light industrial because it's retail, why would we jump through hoops to put retail in light industrial area?
That's, that's up to you, I mean, you know, retail, you're zoning down, it's less intense than industrial, so, I mean.
I mean, I, I agree.
You're not zoning up, I mean, it definitely can go, it lowers intensities, can go into higher intensity zones.
Lowers the bar, but it just seems like we're going backwards. You know, I, I don't really care if there's a dispensary in light industrial or heavy for that matter, but it just seems like we're going backwards just to get something that, if somebody wants to put a retail establishment in light industrial or heavy industrial, why not let them take the chance? I don't know. It's, it's, it's gonna be another case of a light industrial area with one chunk of community commercial. And we see that down on South Street, there's residential, there's light industrial, there's community commercial, and it's just haphazard. Just light industrial because of storage buildings, it's community commercial because of South Street, it's light industrial because of the fire department. It's, I don't know. If that, I, maybe that doesn't make any sense, but it just seems like you try to get all the ducks in order and then we just undo it all.
Well, regardless, it would have to, have to go through planning, it's not, it'd have to go through publication, it'd have to go through, you know, the neighbors accepting it in that area, basically. So, I think, let's limit our questions, that's already contingency if we were to approve it. And all of those discussions can be had in all of those meetings. I'd say, let's limit our questions to questions to the business, how you're operating, any, any of those kind of things that we have about the application.
I have a business related question. I've had the, uh, I've had the opportunity to stick my head in a private grow tent, and there is, there was a substantial odor from six plants. And, um, I, I don't know, I can't remember how many plants you're proposing in your grow building, but I assume it's far more than six?
Yes, sir, it's, uh, four plants per sixteen square feet, and we have a twelve thousand square foot grow facility, uh, which, uh, five of those, I probably got seven of those rooms will be used to grow plants.
So, max capacity, you've already done the math, what's the max capacity?
I did do the math, I, I.
A hundred and eighty plants per room?
Yeah.
Your plan says, and I don't know how many rooms you got.
We have, um, there's five, uh, five blue rooms, which is the second step of the plant's basic growing, and then there's two bedrooms, which is the first part of their stage of growing. So, total of seven rooms.
So, it's over a thousand, twelve hundred is. So, so I know what six plants smell like.
Yes.
I don't have a clue what a thousand or a twelve hundred plants smell like. Safe to say it smells more than six.
Yeah, substantially.
So, what, what is, I didn't see, I didn't see in any that I can remember. I can't, I don't recall seeing anything, and it's, I'm gonna ask everybody the same question. What's the deal with the odor?
Yes, sir, um, I do believe we did resubmit, um, more, cause we did come in and speak and, uh, they did ask those questions, but, um, I can answer, uh, no problem, so.
I mean, is there a filtration system that vents out to the atmosphere?
Yes, sir, so we have, uh, carbon filters. Carbon filters have just a normal filter sleeve like you would have in your house, filtering the air. That filters the air into it. Once it filters air into the carbon, the carbon takes the smell away and releases cleaner into that atmosphere, so you will not have any odor whatsoever as long as you have the right amount of carbon filters per square foot of each grow, each room, and they will be in each room.
That's gonna be a substantial carbon filter for a hundred and eighty plants in one room, does it not?
No, one, uh, the actual life of one carbon filter is about fifteen to twenty years.
Really?
So, it could, it could do the work of a grow room for, for years and years and not die out, so.
So, there's, so there's no, we're gonna open up the doors in the summertime and get natural light, just run down on the electric bill and?
It's gonna all be indoor, uh, indoor facility with all LED lights, which will help keep constant electricity on.
Never open the doors?
Never open the doors, so, sir, that's to get in on the building, actually. Um, what you're referring to, I believe, would be an outdoor grow, uh, that would be a grow that, that would be, um, grow inside of a greenhouse, but you would retract the roofs and allow sunlight to come in during summer hours.
I'm, I'm just thinking Hartford in July or August, everybody's got the doors open.
Yeah, it would be, it would be closed, uh, everything has to stay temperature monitored, um, the right humidity has to be held.
Climate controlled, you're on climate control.
Yeah, exactly.
And you deal with the odor through carbon filters?
Through the carbon filters, and that's it, that's all, the carbon filters in the air.
Cause I assume this is a, this is a substantial financial undertaking.
Yes, sir, uh, one of our business partners actually owns, uh, medical, I mean, a, uh, medical and recreational dispensary in Denver, Colorado. He's the one that's gonna be coming and helping us, and we actually went down there to see his grow facilities as well. Uh, so he pretty much is gonna come and help us set everything up, so it's a hundred percent okay, we don't have any complaints.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a large investment, you'd be losing it because you did add an odor.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Cause the, the people I taught, every, every comment I've heard is the odor.
Everywhere, even in Sioux Falls, it's, that's one of the main thing on the application, is odor prevention, you have to have a good odor plan. Um, and like I said, we proposed a, a odor plan that would eliminate that, and again, no doors would be opened, so no snow would stay.
Well, I, I seen one that proposed a filter system, and it very well may have been yours, but my eyes were probably bleeding by the time I got done with it, so.
They're in your pages.
All right, do we have any questions, or do we have any else in the council?
Thank you. More for Teresa. This application is for three areas. So, is it one application for ten thousand dollars and three abilities, or is this three ten thousand dollar applications?
It's three ten thousand dollar application, they submitted thirty thousand dollars.
So.
So, basically, you're looking at, you could approve the manufacturing.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Or not.
Would you do one, two, or three?
Yep, you can look at it all separately.
One on all three, because there is three separate applications.
Exactly.
Just on one form.
Right, and like Tom indicated, the, the lot they're proposing is light industrial, meets all our regulations for the cultivation and the manufacturing. That's all okay, just that in order for them to move forward a dispensary like they want, since we only allow it in community commercial, that half portion, that north portion needs to be replatted and rezoned. But they could, you know, theoretically move forward if council see fits with the cultivation and the manufacturing. That is all within our zoning regulations.
And with, with the rezoning, we're just looking more for safety purposes, uh, transporting the product to the facility with it on the same lot. It keeps, you know, minimal, minimal problems and less chances of us getting injured or harmed.
Other questions?
I'm not very familiar with that, Travis, you probably know more, I mean, what's the closest residence, closest other building up there on that curb? Is there any?
Residence just to the south of it.
Which?
Which is, uh, less than half of this room. Correct. Then there's the, there's the residential one in District Eight, in the north of it, right?
Yeah, but there's that buffer, that twenty foot of buffer, that nothing is going into that separates the entire industrial, you know.
Yeah, we got the residential on the north side.
So, basically, Trojan Avenue.
It's the northwest lot on the inside curve of that, is all I can.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's Lot Six, Block Seven, Western Meadows Edition.
There's a, there's a map.
So, there's still lots on the left and north side of, of that curb?
Well, not according to the G I O street.
No, there isn't.
There, there's no lots on the north or west side of that curb, just a buffer, a big ass residential.
West, there's a lot, but it'll be light industrial as well. There's nothing directly to the north.
Directly north is the residential.
Yeah, but there's, there's a big buffer zone in there.
Fifty-five acres. So, is your current grow building for your own resale, or are you supplying other outlets?
Both, yes, sir, um, with that license approved by the state, you guys, it allows us to grow for ourselves as well as distributing to other facilities here, um, throughout South Dakota.
Hey, I have a quick question, if you're, uh, selling to other people like you just mentioned, then, uh, who's doing, is there independent testing, who's doing that?
Uh, yes, sir, so it's actually a conflict of interest for you to own your own testing facility, so whoever applies in Sioux Falls or, I'm assuming Sioux Falls, for a testing facility license and gets approved, we will have to go through them to get tested. Um, and how testing is done is you basically sample a little bit of each product of each plant, and you take it in and they will test it and let you know if there's any bacteria or, um, any sort of problems, pests, mold, anything with the, the plant, they'll let you know. They also let you know the percentages of THC that's in it. So, when you print it, you label it and put it on so everybody knows how much they're consuming. So, yes, to answer your question, yes, we are gonna have to go to somebody else for, for testing.
All right, any other questions before we move? So, as Tom pointed out, we've got a couple options tonight, especially with this one, we've got the option to approve it, contingent on, on the rezoning happening. Right now, we, I don't necessarily see, and you haven't necessarily seen, a material reason to deny it. Um, we could table it and allow the rezon, some of those things, or table it and ask more questions next meeting. We've got some of those options. But I want you to make sure that you're, know where you're at, kind of feel where you're at, rather than see an approval die tonight, cause you still have questions, if you're still wondering.
I think the other option could be like Teresa said, if you approve the manufacturing and cultivation licenses, cause those don't have a rezoning?
Do we have to deal on these one at a time, or can we listen to all four of the presentations and then, or do we have to deal on each one separate?
We can do, we can handle it however we want to.
I'd like to hear everything and then circle back.
Have a good night, actually.
Yeah, we're gonna take a.
Any other questions on Code Cannabis? All right, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, next one we got up is for Joe Barnes. Hi. All right. Please state your name and where you're from for, just for a minute.
Yeah, Andy Kenyon, I'm from Madison, South Dakota. So, I have no prepared remarks, but I just wanted to let you know that, uh, I'm a father, I'm a veteran, I'm an engineer, I'm a traumatic brain injury survivor. I saw with the approval of, uh, the M and A, uh, incredible opportunity for the people of South Dakota, and, uh, chose to enter the field with that in mind. And, uh, chose to enter the field, uh, with that in mind. I'm looking to cultivate, just to grow. I'm not looking to run a dispensary, not looking to run a testing or a manufacturing facility, just simply to grow. And, uh, I guess with that, I wanted to open up to your questions rather than listening to me ramble on.
You're good. You're good. I'll first go to Tom again, like I did last time. Tom, do you have anything on this application?
Yes, so this, this is important, right? Okay. Yeah. This, this doesn't meet all the requirements. This one's light industrial, so, um, this would meet the requirements under the license ordinance. Um, I think, and Teresa and Craig went, um, the owners and went through their business plan that then, but they are property zoned and that's part of the certification that the city will send to the state that they approve the licensure. And it certifies that it meets all the zoning and other requirements that the city has for, uh, place growth and location, so.
I wanted to take a second to address the quest, uh, the concern that John raised about, uh, the smell. Because he said he was gonna ask it, I'd rather, I'd just as soon take it by, take the bull by the horns. My facility is sealed. There are no windows and the only, there are, only one door will be open at any point in time. All the other doors are gonna be locked and alarmed. It'll be openable from the inside in the event of evacuation if required. But they won't be open on a regular basis and an alarm will go off if they are open. Um, but don't, so there's only one way in or out on, on a regular basis. That, uh, will keep the smell from getting out considering the rest of the facility is sealed. In addition to that, uh, we'll be running air puri, air purifiers inside the facility and as well as negative ion generators. And at night, night, when everyone departs the facility, we'll run ozone generators, um, which really go, go, go a long way towards keeping the smell down. Um, in addition to ozone, we're gonna run rainbows, uh, to sweep out the particulate matter of the, that the ozone precipitates out, uh, during the, during the nighttime. Um, the ozone generators will be timed so that way they're, they, uh, stop producing ozone, uh, three hours before any, any people will be in the facility for, uh, safety standpoint to prevent exposure to ozone. So just wanted to address that concern early because I hear it was a comp.
Ozone generators and what else?
Uh, negative ion generators.
Negative ion.
Uh, so those doors that are, um, sealed but only open in the event of emergency, would those, I'm assuming those are gonna be monitored by an alarm company for security purposes?
Yes.
So that, that neighborhood may be concerned that, uh, those may find themselves cropped open at times. Uh, assuming all of your, um, monitoring systems are in place, that would also activate a coming sheriff, a deputy to arrive because of an alarm call, I would assume?
Yes, every time one of those doors, except for the main door, every time another door is open, law enforcement gets called.
The, uh, the thing I found intriguing about your proposal was, uh, did you propose an incinerium?
Yes.
And, but you're not gonna vent that incinerator?
Um, the incinerator will be, either be vented into the main, into the, the main space. It's a thirty foot by, uh, sixty foot, uh, open space, um, with high ceiling, with, uh, twenty-two foot ceilings. So, you know.
So one, one of those bays would just be the incinerator?
Uh, the middle bay, it'll be for, uh, it's gonna be office space on one end. And then on the other end, it's gonna be the incinerator itself.
So how do you have an incinerator without an exhaust?
It's only a fifty-five gallon drum. It's, it's relatively small size. So it, uh, shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue. In the event that it becomes an issue, I will revive my business plan. And we always have as an alternative, uh, the way that's described in thirty-four twenty G and, uh, court in rule forty-four ninety as a potential, uh, in the event that the incinerator proves not working. Oak Ridge, where are you?
Farming.
How many years?
Four.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If nothing else, we appreciate it. We're gonna keep working through some of these applications. If you have more questions, just click the last video. All right, thank you. All right, next one up is Genesis Farms. Anybody represent Genesis there?
Hi, my name is Justin Johnson. I live in Sioux Falls, um, one of the partners of Genesis Farms. If I can answer any questions, I guess. We're following safe security, safe smell plan that the state has. I think it's in our application.
The go-to medium was for their manager to be answered at another meeting tonight, but I, he wasn't logged on yet, so.
Does the state have an odor plan?
Uh, well, with the state, I, what we put in our application, I guess, for the, the odor control deal, is in that plan.
And you have several of them, right? Genesis Farms, you, you're doing several of these across the city.
Yeah, we're, we're planning to go across the state via provisional in Sioux Falls. Um, Fox Elders tonight, my partner's up there to speak him, um, rapidly, pretty much, yeah, we're trying to go across the state.
Start all the way around.
So the thing that caught my attention about your application is this isn't the application that we approved.
This is not the application approved?
No, it's the, the application that the council approved had four boxes on it that said what you are applying for. So when I look at your application, I don't, you're applying for a distribution?
No, just a dispensary.
And what this looks like, we, we had in, one of our council meetings, we had a draft for them to review and I, I'm wondering if you took it off of one of our council packets? Because when we reviewed it, basically all we added was check boxes to check what kind of application you're applying for.
Emmett said he's logged in. I, I apologize because Emmett is the guy who's kind of together, our, our plan and he's, he's texting me now saying he's logged in.
Can you see us? Well, that was, don't forget it's so good, okay. Can, can you just put him on the phone?
Hey, Justin.
Yeah, hey, I got you on speakerphone. I'm up here talking.
Hello, um, I'm logged in at go-to meeting.
Can you see us?
Can you see the council?
Nope, I can't. Should I leave and come back?
I don't know if it says in or my end. I was having trouble getting myself here and then.
It says I'm in a meeting with, uh, it's asking me if I'm Teresa Seidel. Um.
Just say yes. Try yes.
Try yes.
Say yes?
Sure.
Okay. And it'll ask me to sign in now.
I was having you like sign in like the organizer first.
Yeah, do you want me to log out? And maybe I think you might have to be in there first. Maybe I'll just close it and come back in.
Hey, what is, what about the application? They said if you turned one in and you turned another one in, the first one? I don't know how to answer that.
Uh, no, we've only turned in one application for a dispensary license.
Hey, we, Emmett, what we noticed with when the application you turned in, and I didn't even notice this when we met until today, it was brought to my attention, but the application you turned in, um, is, is the draft application we have, but wasn't our final one. Our final one had, um, boxes where you check whether you're, what kind of cannabis establishment you're applying for, whether it be cultivation, testing, or the dispensary. Um, this didn't have any of those boxes on there, so I was just wondering if you took the application off of, um, one of our council meetings that we had out there in the packet or?
Um, I thought that I had emailed you. I'd have to go back and look. I can't recall. Um, there was only one application form that I remember working with, uh, but like I said, I'd have to go back and check where I got it. Um, usually I contact the city first prior to applying. Um.
I, I, I mean, we know, and I marked on your application since that you're applying for the dispensary, but we're just kind of wondering how you got the draft versus the final.
Okay, yeah, I, I wasn't aware that there's different versions. I apologize. Um. Are you able to give me in the go-to meeting or, uh?
I got several boxes open.
I guess you can tell me what to do. I can log out and log back in if that, if that helps.
I'll try that as well.
Okay, I'm, uh, going back in.
Now I've got the message I had before, so.
It's loading right now. Um, okay, I see myself again and it just says waiting for Teresa Seidel.
Yeah, I think it's on our end. I'm, it's trying to connect, but it's not going through on my end, so you might just need to keep you on speakerphone.
Yeah, I think that'll work just fine.
Yeah.
You know, and I, the application piece of it, materially, we have the right information in here if we have them fill out a, another application that's, I mean, I'd want for our files to have, to have everything exactly like we have in our approved application, but materially, everything in here.
Yeah, the only thing is just missing.
Any, anything that you noticed on this time or?
The, the issue here is with respect to the property. There, it sounds like there's been some issues with getting, you're gonna be leasing the, the facility. Um, and that the person who's buying the facility still doesn't have title to it. So their landlord still doesn't own the property yet, so, um, we think that's an issue that needs to be resolved before the license can be approved.
Another one of those contingent on?
Um, the property actually being acquired.
Sure.
By, it looks like Mr. Markart with Cam Companies. He's got an agreement to purchase the property, apparently closing has been scheduled and, um, failed due to the current owner not making it to closings, so.
Oh, sure. Do we have any closing? Is there closing dates?
I don't know that.
What is that?
We've not rescheduled a closing yet.
Okay, that's it. Good. Any other questions from anybody else, um, from the business plan or what they're, what they're looking to do here?
I still just be curious, you mentioned the state has a, has an odor program. I'm just curious what that would be.
Emmett, can you hear that?
Yep, um, the, so the question was about odor control?
Yeah, and I, I maybe misspoke and said that the state had a requirement that was in our business plan.
Um, we do have an odor control plan that was included with the application and basically, um, what it addresses is the, um, HVAC system that will be installed in the facility. It has three different layers of air cleaning stages and I include a diagram, um, in the business plan which shows how that works. Essentially, there's a pre-filter, um, which blocks large dust and pollen, and then there's a true HEPA filter, um, which, uh, filters again at that a greater granular level, and then the final filter is activated charcoal layer. Um, these have been proven to work very well in dispensary environments in other states where I'm familiar. Um, and then we have other parts of the odor control plan that address how we would respond to a complaint or any detection to an odor. Um, keeping logs that make sure we inspect the filters and replace them as often as necessary. Um, so there's multiple layers of protection. And one of the most important points, um, to note is that all of our products will come into the facility pre-packaged in airtight, uh, child-resistant sealed packaging containers. And so, um, it's not very odorous when they come in, those types of containers. Um, it's more of an issue for, you know, cultivation facilities where there's plants growing. Um, and our, and our dispensary, I don't anticipate any problem controlling the odor with, with our plans in place.
Yeah, I guess, cause of the application, I didn't know what you were applying for. But yeah, I guess my concern, my concern with odor isn't necessarily with the dispensers because-
You know, this is just a dispensary only, on the site that we, uh, that we are proposing in our group.
Cause I, I can't imagine, I've never been in a dispensary, but I can't imagine that, that the bugs just aren't in a bowl or the flowers or whatever you refer to as they're not just in a tubular. You know, I assume they're-
You eat on somebody's grill or something.
Yeah, I've stuck my head to grill, but I haven't been in a dispensary.
Not what we want.
But I, I assume in the dispenser, everything's sealed up, everything's-
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay. I'm very numb. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, bud. Thank you. All right, DJ, hometown buds.
BJ Olson, hometown buds, Hartford, South Dakota resident for nineteen years as of last month. Uh, with my wife, who's been a Hartford resident since the day she was born. Um, been here through this entire process with you guys, worked with planning and zoning on the, you know, the application. Uh, the very first time I, I've been to several city council meetings, uh, with you guys for the first reading, second reading, helped come up with parts of the application. And really have a vested interest in cannabis in our community. Um, the one thing that I have that, that nobody else here has that is looking to do a dispensary is I have to face everybody every single day. So all the customers, all the constituents, all the patients that come in to our facility, uh, when I'm at the basketball games, when I'm at the, at church, when I'm at the Pizza Ranch, whatever, I'm the face of the company, I'm the face to the community, and I'm the one that lives in the community. So it's very important for me that, that we get this right. And, uh, for that reason, my business partner, Adam, who's, uh, originally from South Dakota, he's from T, uh, lives currently in Phoenix, but came back for this event. Uh, we, we decided to go the franchise route. The things that we are good at, uh, my, my background is in franchising with Verizon, my partner's, uh, background is in franchising with T-Mobile. Uh, we have the only nationally recognized, uh, franchise, franchise in cannabis in the country. Um, we wanted to go something that has a proven record for success. Wanted to be able to go, have somebody hand us the playbook of, you know, what air filtration system, what POS system, what way to do it the right way, the compliant way, in a way that has never had a single, um, you know, infraction from the beginning. And it's hard job to, to sit there and simply execute on those plans day in and day out. Made the investment in the community, purchased a piece of land, uh, didn't apply for Sioux Falls, this is where we wanted to be. Purchased a piece of land, looking forward to building, uh, our dispensary location, twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, very thorough, uh, application process. I feel that we've covered, you know, just about everything that could ever be asked for, but, uh, again, I wanna make sure that it's done correctly. I wanna make sure it's done right. My wife and I are involved in, into the community and, and kind of feel responsible for, um, the options that our dispensary would have in this community, so I wanna make sure that it is done correctly.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Tom, you didn't notice any?
Well, this, this one's in a proper zone, properly zoned area, so maybe we don't have the other licensure requirements for dispensary.
DJ, refresh my memory where this property is located at.
Uh, just directly north of Ace Hardware, so. Basically between Ace Hardware and the substation.
I apologize, I've invested or ingested a lot of information about this in the last, in the last twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I, I can only-
It's still legal.
You can ingest all that you want. You know, and I, you know, I'm taking it into the last year and a half of my business partner and I started this venture, we learned more than I ever thought I could about the cannabis industry in this very, you know, small year and a half without ever opening a store. I mean, we, we have no idea what the store looks like once we're inside there, but I've already been there a bajillion times in my head.
Any questions for DJ?
Is it the lot, so it's not the lot?
It's not right on western, it's one off.
And that's one bad.
Bus, bus on the one closest to western.
So is it actually directly north of the Ace or is it west of the Ace?
So Ace is like two lots deep and those are kind of shallow lots, so of the actual building, yes, we're directly north, bus lot is directly north of the park, essentially.
Yeah, the G I S, those shows in Missport, Broken Road, four hundred and four oh four oh.
So there's nothing to the north in the southwest is, uh, apartments on place.
Alright, any other questions?
That's already zoned.
It's already zoned, correctly, it's already zoned community commercial, so it is zoned correctly.
Alright. Appreciate it, thank you. Alright. If we look, um, discussion from the council, are there any of these that you'd like to circle back to, questions? If we'd like to knock out that are easier to get done right away? Any discussions? I would honestly say a couple of, and a couple of these are pretty cut and dry. Um, this last one, for instance, so there's no growing, it's a dispensary, everything gets shipped. I don't see any material issues with it. We're not ahead, we're not ahead of the game by approving these at this point, so. I would maybe suggest from the council, if you're, if you've got major questions, let us know, but I'd say if you've got a couple of these that are pretty cut and dry, let's get those knocked out and then let's get to the more, more difficult ones.
Any motions?
Motion to approve the hometown Bud's application as presented.
One second. Okay, your motion is second on hometown Bud's? Discussion? I'm gonna vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Burnham?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Anne Jones?
Yes.
One dispensary license? Have they got one they'd like to jump to or discuss?
Motion to approve the girl farms application as presented.
Motion for girl farms? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I, I would really, I would really like to do some more legwork on odor. I mean, that is literally right next door. There's literally two residential houses just east of that property. Crystals and I don't know who bought the house on the corner. And, I mean, I'm the number two. Yeah, and so I, and I mean ozone generators and negative ion, that's, I have no idea what that is. And I have...
You can't see in an environment with ozone generators on there, they're bad to deal with, they're smell, they're a lot of stuff.
And like, I mean, that, that might be, that might be the magic bullet. I have no idea, so. And I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna not do my due diligence and then, and then have a problem and then have, have somebody make that kind of investment and then they not get a renewal because, you know, because honestly, it bothers the neighbors for a year. So, because these licenses are only good for a year. And if, and if the neighborhood's screaming and hollering about the odor for a year, I don't know what the prospects look like for the following year. I don't even know, I don't even know who to, who to contact about. Maybe my buddy with the grill tent, call him and see what they do down in Oklahoma. I have no idea who to contact about. And that's not to say anybody's not being forthright with me tonight, but...
Do I get a chance to address the... Come on, I'm sure, come on. So, uh, the facility that I'm looking at leasing is sealed, it is closed. There is, there is no air intake, there is no air exhaust, there is no way for the smell that will be generated by the plants that are growing to get out from the building, uh, into the world except for the one door that is, that is airlocked. The building is subdivided into three equal sections. The growing plants could be into two sections on the outermost sides of the building, and then those sides will open into the interior section, and then the interior section will open out into the world. So there's an airlock kind of system that goes on.
Well, I'm, I'm very familiar with the building here with that. I'm, I'm very familiar with that.
I believe. So, that's, that's one of the steps that I've taken to, you know, preventing the smell because not only do I want to keep the smell in, I want to keep outside pollen out because pollen can get in and it germinates, uh, female plants and that's bad. So it's in my vested interest to keep the outside out and the inside in as much as physically possible. And I have taken, uh, robust steps to ensure that that remains the case throughout the life cycle of the entire thing.
I, I have no reason, I have no reason to not believe what you're saying, but to be quite honest, I didn't look at this information for a couple different reasons until, I didn't, I didn't get into this last night until about six o'clock. And I just don't feel comfortable. Here's another fun fact. Every one of these applications is in my ward. Every one. These are all in Ward Two. Ward one, Ward one, Ward two. So, so when, when it hits the fan, it hits the fan on me and Mark. So, like I said, I'm not saying that anything you're presenting tonight is not true. What I'm, what I'm trying to convey is, I don't know. I don't know about ozone generators. I don't know about maybe ion, whatever you said that was. It was a what? Negative ion.
Negative ion generator.
Negative ion generator. And I, and I know the building. I assume it's, I assume it's airtight to, to a point. I mean, it's a steel building. I assume the walls are in some way that I'm, I assume it's steel on the inside.
It is insulated, yes.
Yeah, so, so I assume it, it has a high level of being sealed, so, and I'm not disputing that. But the fact of the matter is, is that Crystal lives right next door to it. And I'm not saying that because everybody in town knows Crystal that I would turn you down. I'm just saying I want to make sure I do my due diligence before I vote to approve, that's all. Does that make sense? Or not? I mean, I, I know, I understand that it's zoned light industrial, I mean, it was zoned light industrial for storage buildings. And living right next to a storage building, zoned light industrial was one thing. Living in a residential neighborhood and living next to a grow farm is a totally different animal in my mind. It's zoned the same, but it's still a different animal to me. So, and I'm not saying I won't vote for it, I'm just saying I want to do some more research. That's just me, so.
You touched on it, that it's a storage, so what, other than the, you know, the ionization, the negative ion stuff, ozone, I should say, does the, does the structure itself need some work to make it that airtight?
No, no. It's, it's insulated, the, the structure itself is insulated and it meets those, meets all the requirements. It's, you know, not a hundred percent airtight, it's not, it's not, see, it can't be pressurized, but it is, it is sealed as a, as a building can be.
You, you're not intending to take any other steps to ensure that no pollen gets in, no smell gets out other than the steps that you intend to take internally to that premise?
Yeah, the steps that I plan to take are, yeah, internal, and I also plan to run air filtration systems on a constant basis to make sure that the air is, is clean, because I'm gonna have people working in there and, uh, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna want to be working in a place that is clean as possible.
For my own peace of mind, is that one of these systems that you see on TV where you'll have to dawn a, a gas mask or an air signal? It's not that.
No, it's, it's not that.
Okay, and just, you can walk in there and talk like normally and...
Yes.
All of the, with no special, no special PPE for the employees?
Well, I, I mean, the odor's not harmful.
Not at all.
But, I mean, it's, it'll get your attention though. I mean, no different than a, no different than going in the taxi service down there on South Street. I mean, it's not harmful, but it'll get your attention, so. And, and he brings up about the point, I mean, that building's probably sealed up as good, maybe not as good as most houses, but I mean, similar, you know, drafts and, and whatnot. I mean, it's, it's quality building. Everybody knows which one we're talking about, the blue one with the three big doors that face south, so. Yeah, there's, I don't have any expectation that, that odor would leak out. Like I said, I just, I just want to make sure I do my due diligence, so.
Say it again, it's which one?
It's the blue one with the white doors that face south, right next to Crystals on the west side.
The face of South Street, doors face South Street.
Right across from the, uh, lot.
Two one West Men?
They all have the same address.
They all, yeah, because it's all... Mark is correct.
There, okay, so that's my concern, that was my concern.
Me?
The things weren't happening for me.
That is all one lot, yeah.
So, okay.
Storage units on it, so.
I was trying to look at the application where I missed.
No, this is the, the one, the long South Street, yes.
Okay, alright.
That was the...
That makes much more sense to me than, uh, I'm trying to think of. I've ranked a lot of storage units, and you throw a cat through a lot of those.
This is sort of a larger, yeah.
It's a big space.
Okay, alright.
Alright, another discussion on this. We got a motion, a second to approve at this point.
Uh, it might be in here, but facility improvements, just security, nothing for fire, like a sprinkler system, fire alarm?
Uh, fire alarm, water alarm, uh, CO2 detectors, carbon monoxide detectors. You know, we will have a full suite of, uh, of environmental protections. Mostly to, to ensure the health of all the employees that'll have work in there as well as the health of the plants.
And what do you, what do you predict for max capacity for plants?
For plants? Uh, roughly about eighteen thousand. About, and city-state, yes. Uh, we plan to grow hydroponically and, uh, in these, they, they come in kits that hold twenty-four plants per kit, and we're gonna expand at a rate of one kit per week. And at that rate, it'll take about three years to reach full capacity.
Okay, so this is your opportunity to educate me. Eighteen thousand plants. We've all seen pictures on the internet, well, maybe not, I hope we've seen pictures on the internet, but there are literally pot plants out there that look like Christmas trees. And I don't mean like little Christmas trees, I mean like National Lampoon, Family Day.
I'm familiar.
And I'm not sure you get eighteen thousand of those in that building, so you must be... I, I don't know how big a plant has to be before you harvest it, from four to five buds out that you can, that you can harvest the buds off a plant? But is that, is that a two-foot plant, a three-foot plant? I mean, how big's that plant?
Uh, they're gonna be about three feet tall, and they're gonna contain about four ounces of saleable product per plant. That's my, uh, that's my rough estimate, or that is the estimate that I've used for budgeting and projections. So they're gonna be on the smaller side, they're not gonna be monsters.
But you, but you project you can get eighteen thousand of those in, what'd you say, each base thirty by sixty?
Yeah.
Thirty by sixty, two base, because the other base is gonna be office and center.
Yep. Sixty by sixty.
Thirty-six hundred square feet?
Fair enough.
I'm not saying you can, I'm just trying to do math in my head and just trying to imagine what...
Five plants per square foot.
Five plants per square, that seems, that seems like a lot of plants per square feet.
Unfortunately, but you're stacking them, right?
You stack, you stack?
You're stacking them, right?
Yes, they stack.
Oh, it's not even me, they're hydroponics. Level them up in the water.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to learn.
Yep, you stack too high.
Too high, yep. So you're gonna, yeah, so you double your square footage you grow?
Yes, and the hydroponic kits are built to stack, they're sold with stacking equipment. So it's not like I'm taking something that isn't even a two D stack, they are intended to be stacked. Alright. There's no other discussion, we're gonna vote. We've spent a lot of time on these already. There we go, motion a second? Vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Burnham?
I'd say no.
Monahan?
I'd say no.
Anne Jones?
Yes.
Okay, does not pass. Um, I'll look at Tom, I just took further direction as far as that goes with this application.
You could...
Could happen next.
Maybe you could ask the council to reconsider the vote at the next meeting? If there's more information you want to get to that time.
I feel that that would be appropriate because, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I feel like that would be appropriate, just, um, we have an application that's in order, we have something that's in order. I think it'd be appropriate to revisit it again.
I'm gonna make it real easy. I'm gonna make a motion that we put this application on the next meeting. That's a motion.
Second. I hear that. Any discussion? Alright, vote, Monahan?
Yep.
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Anne Jones?
Yes.
Alright, any others out there?
Motion to approve the cultivation and manufacturing aspect of the cannabis application.
Per cannabis, cultivation?
And manufacturing. Alright, so I'll start with cultivation.
Your motion for cultivation of cannabis? Want a second?
Second.
Clear discussion.
I have, I have the same, I have the same concerns about this as I did the last one. I'd like to...
Research stuff.
I'd like to research the filtration, the odor side of it, so, because I, I mean, that, that's my biggest thing on, on all these. The dispensaries to me are, you know, yeah, so.
Any others? Questions or concerns?
I've traced it this way, by cultivation and manufacturing, we're looking at...
Correct.
Yep.
Amir?
Yes.
Uh, just as a side note, I talked with my brother-in-law, Munus, in Denver, Colorado, Parker suburb of Denver, and through the question that he involves odor on grow units and how that affects the city of Denver. He said for the majority, they tried to keep them away from heavily populated areas, but he said one of the biggest grow houses in all of Colorado was right downtown in Denver.
Sure. And I, you're...
I think, I think that, I, I think Mark and Mark, I think the, you know, it's warranted to make sure we're doing some, uh, doing some investigation, but I think that, uh, that's all I'll say. I, I'm, I think we're in, in good grounds to do that, but, uh... that's all I'll say, I, I'm, I think we're in, in good grounds to do that, but, uh, I think that this industry has been evolving, and I think they're probably addressing those types of issues as quickly as they can.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just got a general question, on the application, list of owners and board members, you guys did not fill out the percentage of the ownership group, there was a lot of blank.
At the, at the time, excuse me. At the time, you weren't sure how many investors we had, or we were gonna go forth with. I think we, I believe currently, right now, we have eight investors, um, and we have a 125% each investor. We've all invested equal now.
We should probably have them update that then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could, I reset my motion, can I do that?
Who have any other motions?
I make a motion to table this until we get an updated application, second.
Motion to table, vote? O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
And Jones?
Yes. So we approve one for dispensary, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was the one one. Discussion on remaining applications.
Should we just table the one or do we table all?
And that's, that's the Dakota Cannabis.
For that one?
Application, I tabled the application, or the market, I wanted to table the application.
Is that for the whole?
It's three applications, though.
For all of them?
Right.
Yeah, it was all, well, we did mark all three, so I'm thinking for all of them.
Because the same information we need it for all three.
Yep.
That's my understanding when I'm voting. Should we move it forward, then, I will file three applications.
Yeah, that'd be clear.
So the three separate applications, we can turn into three changes.
Yeah.
Once we submit the, the application that we give to.
Which can be at the next meeting, right?
Yep. When is the next meeting, do you know? It'll be.
Twenty-first.
Yep.
Alright. Genesis, we haven't had anything on Genesis yet, is that correct?
Correct.
This one, I believe we, we at least want an updated application for five. Any other discussion on, you know, the portions on Genesis?
This one's going with, uh. It's got the ownership of the property issue that I think would need to be resolved before.
Yeah, I, I think we can table this until we get that ownership. Because, because I, I mean, in the, in the grand scheme of things, the way I see it is if we grant this license, and the lease falls through, then we have a license out there that doesn't have a place to land, so. So I'm, I'm gonna make this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to table this until they get their, their lease straightened out. Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Don't discuss on the case, they get the.
Don't discuss on the case, that's supposed to be discussion on people and.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, thank you, yep, no discussion on table, yep. Um, we'll mention that afterwards, O'Hara? Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Martin?
Yeah.
And Jones?
Yep.
And then, so on this one, yeah, we won't update the application, and we'd want separate applications for each, each line of business on this one as well, so.
Just a dispensary. Just a dispensary.
Hang on, I'm thinking of a different one here. Okay, no, you're perfect.
I just need an updated application, then something to show.
To the rezoning process, um, when will we know further around that? I know she said, she mentioned two or three months, uh, how would we?
I would let Theresa give some direction on rezoning and how that process is gonna work.
Yeah, you'd have to, um, get replotted, like we talked about, to the two lots. And once it's replotted, then, um, we'll have to put out a notice, the publication, to get it rezoned, and go through the planning and zoning board, and then it'll have to come through city council, so it'll be two months process.
Okay, but we can get that process started with you.
Yep, you can start that process.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Alright. Thank you. Come on, I just got one more minute, yep.
I'm the executive director of the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota. Um, I just, I wanted to pop up here, half of the applicants today are members of our association, and, uh, I just wanted to give kudos to you all, um, I think you really capitalized on some mistakes that were maybe made down in Sioux Falls. And, uh, I think it's gonna bring a lot of revenue and jobs and good business to your community, so I thank you for the ordinance that you wrote. Um, I think you're taking the right approach here, and I hope that we can get some of these businesses online sooner than later, so, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you. Alright. We're gonna move on, I'm gonna jump around a little bit here, and yes, since there's some folks that are waiting, uh, but, Debbie Carter's probably gonna get that first, so we're gonna pull him up, raise your hand right. You guys have my reports, um, any questions for, for me, for government? Tell anybody who's in the district first. Thank you for your job.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's what we're talking about all day. I mean, what's the security inserted from the county, what's going on in terms of facilities and?
Uh, honestly, I don't think that we have a stance on it. From just my personal experience living in California and seeing dispensaries jumping up right when I was in California, you're gonna see the same things, um, such as, uh, possible robberies, um, possible burglaries. It, it's all, it's all possible, so, um, a lot of the things that you see in Sioux Falls, the folks getting ripped off or whatever, it's because of weed, but, I think also, I also think it's a good revenue, revenue?
Yeah, I can't talk right now.
Revenue, revenue for the county and stuff, and for the city, so. But, you know, we'll just take one day at a time and treat these businesses, you know, equally. And I would do my part of just partnering, and getting to know these businesses, and seeing what their security system looks like, and what type of procedures that they're taking, uh, to ensure the safety of their product and their customers and the community, so. That's my stance, so.
Sorry, it's very familiar, is there provision in the application for carrying a marijuana card that bars you from carrying a weapon? Where you have to surrender your work, or, um, what do you wanna say?
Question?
Your firearm permit?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
Not that I heard of it, I don't know.
Alright, I didn't have time to deep dive into that, it's just some dran scheme to.
It's probably similar.
Get some gun control in place, too.
No, I think it's very similar to the, uh, for example, when you, we do a DUI investigation, and someone has a loaded firearm, you know, they'll be also charged with that misdemeanor as well, too, so, but they're, they're in possession of a firearm while, so, that would be, so.
Very possible, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Alright, we're gonna jump away from reports in a minute, and we're gonna announce these, these releasing funds for the 2020 budget, because everybody's been patient waiting. So, Hartford Senior Center, we're gonna come to that one first. Nine thousand dollars. Lois, thanks for hanging in there with us.
It's okay. I am Lois Kaiser from Martin, and we request that you release the $9,000 for us, we thank you for your support, too. Couldn't do it without you.
Absolutely, thank you, you're kind, Don.
Lois, I just have one question.
Yes.
And honestly, I could have just leveled up the senior citizen center out of it, but I needed to talk to the Humble Fire, or the Humble Ambulance and the Fire Station, too, and, and ask them this question, so I'm, unfortunately, I have to ask you this question as well. These are funds that were asked for last, that were asked to be released in November, after the budget meeting to ask for money that we had in, was that August? And I'm, I'm just curious, I'm just curious, I, I looked at your, I looked at your, your bank information, and, and I know you, you guys aren't sitting on gold mine, but I, I just can't wrap my mind around asking for money in 2020 and not asking to receive it in 2021 until November, when you were back in August of 2021 to ask for funds for 2022.
Well, part of our problem is we, we had our treasurer that, that took care of that.
Yeah.
That got COVID.
Oh.
And we kind of lost.
Okay.
The new, the new person.
Okay.
Was informed, and it took a while for us to get things straight away.
Fair enough, fair enough, I, like I said, I've seen your books, and I'm not, I'm not here to say you get your 1200 money away, I just, like I said.
Guarantee you, we're not.
I, I wanna ask the Fire Department, and I wanna ask Humble Ambulance, and I can ask them to, I'll ask them you.
Yeah, it's okay.
And now you told them what the excuse is, COVID's the excuse.
She's sick for quite a while, that gal.
I, I figured there was a reason, I just didn't know what it was, so. I appreciate you having to come down here and.
It's okay.
Answer that question, it's good to see you, though.
Thank you. Anything else?
That was, that was the only question I had.
Do we have any motions?
I'll make a motion for the funds for, uh, the year's turn.
I'll second.
Alright.
Alright, no further discussion, the vote? Martin?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yep.
Alright.
Thank you.
On the right side, you got to hear a bunch of marijuana talk.
Alright, Hartford Fire Department, for $12,000 refund. Basically, what you're asking, Mr. Martin, is that, hey, if this was for 2021's budget, how come it's December and, and?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, so we had budget in, just to, just to put a timeframe on it, we had budget in August of 2020, and everybody came down and said, hey, we need money for X, Y, and Z. And there were three entities that didn't. Here, oh, I forgot about this, those entities didn't even ask the city. I believe Theresa reached out to those entities and says, do you want your money, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if I was doing my supplemental appropriation, that money's still on our books, yeah.
So I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give the. I'm gonna give the center a pass.
Say, we need to pay it out.
But, but in the grand scheme of things, the center has less than $4,000, even then, totally. So I'm gonna give them a pass, but the Fire Station, the Fire Station.
But you can give them a pass for money when you're sitting on a big fat stack, too.
Yeah, ask for money in 2020, and then don't ask for that money until the city administrator contacts you in 2021 and says, do you want this money? So. And then, and that's after the August 2021 budget meeting, when the Fire Department came and asked for more.
Right. So, this is what I'll say with that. We are also waiting for money from the county as well. When we go to these budget meetings, and we request our funds, we receive our aid for our payment to the building. We have the rest that sits in account with you guys. The $12,000 is pretty much probably what I'm paying for a water bill at the Fire Station. So, um, and just like anybody else that's in business right now, I'm the treasurer, but I'm running a hell of a business right now that's extremely busy. So I'm not keeping tabs on whether the city's giving me money or not, except for when I do financial statements. And I'm not answering this for the Fire Department right now, I'm answering this because I do the financial statements for the Fire Department. So, um, I would say that this, these are funds that, I guess, and I, I learn this stuff all the time, but I've been doing them for, for quite a while, and I've never had to come down here and request the funds, I don't think. I don't know if Matt was doing it, I don't know if Brian was doing it, I don't know who was doing it. So, that being said, I think being Matt was the first year Fire Chief, the money was appropriated before he was Fire Chief. I think that there's a certain amount of learning curve here, because I would suspect that Brian was coming down. Brian probably told me, hey, run off the balance sheet and income statements, and they consider, that's about how it works. So, I would say that's how it works, um, because yesterday, I woke up, and it was January 1st, and today I wake up in December, that's how fast my year's going. So, I, I did the financial statements for November, and I saw that the second half of the county hasn't been paid either. There again, usually that gets paid the tail end of November, beginning of December, so I'm not seeing a pattern that is out of whack. I'm just figuring in December, I'm gonna get the other half of the county and the, the appropriation from the county. I mean, there's no, is there a good reason why we waited? Did we wait because we had another bill, did we wait because we're sitting on cash? We do sit on hot cash, but what we buy costs $200,000 or $300,000 on the top. We bought two fire trucks two years ago, or whatever it was, and it was a lot of money. Um, so we could do two things, we could, we could, um, not get the appropriation and then come be and ask for $200,000, and see how that all went, I don't think it'd go well. Or we could do what we're doing right now.
No, I'm Jesus, I'm just looking for the next one.
So, but realistically, it's because the year's gone by so fast, so. That's the biggest reason, I would say, I would say that Matt probably didn't know it, he probably thought I was watching it. And, so we ended up in the same spot with this, is what, uh, we have with the county. Uh, we actually went through that last night, because, um, the county's supposed to give it to us in two pieces, and it used to be they gave it to us in March and August.
March and August?
Yeah, March and August. And we get it till November, I think, the last two years, November, beginning of December. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of pushed out to where this may be the norm, but if you want me to ask for it after we get done with the appropriations deal, I'll do that, because it'd be a lot easier for me to do that than to sit up here right now and do it like this.
No, I, I just, I was just curious.
Yep.
Because, because in my mind.
There's no good reason, I mean, there's just the fact that the year's gone by so fast.
Well, yeah, I mean, if.
And, uh, townships pay theirs, and, and we get the billing payment made, and, and the rest of it stays here anyway, in a county, so I don't think about that, it just sits on the balance sheet. So this, this $12,000 was, yeah, if you wanna blame somebody, it's no more than on my part, so.
Alright, I'll make my motion that we get our lease to the funds to the Fire Station.
Sorry? Any other discussion? Thank you. Vote? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yep.
And Jones?
Yep.
Now, right. And Humble Ambulance? O'Hara?
You, you know the question.
Mayor Shoemaker, Humble Ambulance, generally, Tim Eman is the one that shows up for this, he's our chief. Uh, but in regards to the question, um, from the little bit I've been getting into going to township meetings, uh, discussing the contracts for fire and ambulance, uh, the townships I have gone to, um, I believe it was Clear Lake, uh, in Humble Township, uh, City of Humble. But generally, we write our contracts, and we decide whether we're gonna have an increase or no increase, and I know there's been, I think last year it increased, and the year prior it did not. But generally, we write our contracts, and we submit them to the townships prior to the meeting. Uh, when we go to the meetings, uh, they generally have, if, if they have approved it, they will have a check ready for us, and we will take it with us that night when we show up to township meeting, or if they have a discussion. You know, if they, if they have other discussion on the matter, um, you know, they'll table it, and once they come to an agreement on it, they will mail it to us, but we've never had that happen, we've always had to check, take it with us when we show up to the meetings. We were just talking here, last couple months at our fire meetings, that were, you know, Tim was asking Sue's, and Susan Shoemaker does her bookwork, and was asking. and was asking if we got the check from Hartford yet. So going back to what James said, we generally don't show up to a meeting other than the township meetings and then that's, uh, is that March?
March.
March, I believe. Um, and they generally have a check for us there. Uh, and I guess we've never been to that. So, um, going back to our last couple fire meetings, last couple months, or, you know, Tim was asking Susan if we got the check from Hartford yet. So it's not that we couldn't use it or don't need it. It's, it was, you know, on our mind and we're kind of wondering where it was at. And this is the first time we've showed up at a city council.
Am I, am I wrong to think, Teresa, that they typically call and request it?
That's what they should do. It's request for the release of funds. Um, I don't think anybody from the Humble Ambulance has ever come. We did it like on the last agenda. I just have this on the agenda and we just made a motion to do it.
Maybe we should have a policy that we release the funds in January. And instead of.
A standard time would be nice.
We budget for it.
Yeah. And then the new year starts.
And then we don't, why not send them money out?
So do you want to, but we make like Jamboree come and ask for funds because sometimes everybody comes to all of it, don't? We made the chamber come and ask for funds. You didn't release all of it.
No, but I, I think the committees are different though. Jamboree's different because, you know, that price fluctuates. You know, I think the committees are different, but I mean, if we say Humble Ambulance is gonna get X amount of money, that's what they're gonna get. Fire's gonna get whatever they get. The seniors are gonna get whatever they get. You know, those entities are gonna get whatever they get. I think the committees, that number can fluctuate. But I, I really think the biggest thing that blows my mind is that we had that budget meeting in 2020 and then we had another budget meeting in 2021 and the, the budgeted money from 2020 hadn't been dispersed yet and you guys had already, you know what I mean? And I'm, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just, the process is so, the process is so out of whack.
So when you do budget and they request them, money gets put into budget. You really should have somebody from that entity request the release of those funds.
Request the release?
Yeah. Um, because that's state law. They should provide a copy of their financials and request that those funds be released. So the council make a motion to release them. Whether they do it in person or if it's on a general.
You know, maybe it's just as simple as in, at budget time in August, we just say, starting January 1st, you can request this money.
Yeah.
In January.
Yeah, I mean, it's in that year, so they can request it anytime throughout the year.
Just put it on them to make the request instead of putting it on the city.
They just make sure they know that they need to make the request, yeah.
All right, make a motion to release funds for Humble. All right, discussion? Vote, Burnham?
Yes.
Montan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yep.
Thank you. Yep. All right, we are, this is, we have a little bit of review. All right, so we'll look to finish our reports then. Amy, you've got your report in the packet for Chamber and Township Development. Any, anything to add to that?
I'm just encourage anybody that's out and about on Friday from four to seven on the chamber side, we're having the Christmas cookie crawl at area businesses. And if the mayor would like to, it was brought to my attention this afternoon at a meeting, that if you're out and about and would like to take part and do a mayor's pick or choice, um, and we could just put that out on social media as well. So you could pick your favorite treat that you had that evening. That'd be wonderful. Um, and then on the HADF side, I continue to meet with, uh, landowners and developers and, um, attended the Sioux Valley Energy 2030 Revive Meeting Conference. Um, area communities came together to talk about concerns, um, strengths that we're seeing in our communities and how to work together and move forward with those. So, that was my report.
Any questions for Amy? All right, sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, move to the new report.
All right, thanks for the mayor. Um, overall, poor as is, but, uh, on the six and month you told a little bit of construction. Um, we do have a little additional survey going on that particular project. Uh, here's a water main loop that's really close to that that we're gonna evaluate and see what that, that cost is for that particular project. Um, so we're gonna get that additional survey in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then on the Swenson Park, on that storm shelter, we'll actually be meeting tomorrow. We get a couple of questions on the application in regards, that our architecture team had in regards to the FEMA compliance, since that's a FEMA project. And we want to make sure that that's, uh, that's all kosher and that's all included. There's a couple of particular items. And then that, that ball field, uh, the ball field update there. On the wastewater feasibility study, uh, DNR, um, that's actually the final facility plan has been sent over to the city and that will be submitted here in the next week-ish. We just have a couple of signatures that are required on that. And then community development downtown plan, uh, late, uh, January, early February will be the public open house on the, the final draft. So, final draft-ish, there, we'll actually have an open house on that, but then we'll still get feedback on that one last time before we actually finalize that particular document. And then we also included the requested memorandum on the access outline of those three potential options, option one, option two, and option three for the access at the feasibility. Questions?
Just to be clear, when you say the open house?
Yeah.
And that's for the application, that's gotta be out there by January 1st or whatever.
No, uh, open house is the community development downtown plan.
Oh.
Yeah. Yep. So we'll review concepts at that, that particular meeting.
All right. You talk fast, I'm getting confused.
Any other questions?
Same like now, there isn't an open house.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, Craig couldn't be here tonight. Um, your report impacted. Anything you want to note on that, Teresa?
Um, nothing really to touch on in your report. I do want to touch on one thing that I'm putting on the agenda for, um, our next agenda to talk about. We are short on the Akron line that is coming in for the two new wall fields. Um, Craig looked back at his figures and his measurements and the fields are deeper than what he thought. So, um, he didn't have quite enough footage in there. We're about an inch short basically all the way around. So, he figures we're gonna need about another 250 ton of it. Um, if we can order it now, if council approves it, and we'll, we'll take any action since it's not on the agenda next meeting, but, um, it'll be about another $13,500 that would have to be ordered on top of it. So, I just kind of want to give you a heads up on that and I'll put it as an agenda item on our next agenda to, to discuss and.
Discuss next week.
See if we'll take any action. But, I mean, we could, you know, just, you know, we've already put out, or they've got spread what we've already got. We could look at this next spring. Um, will the price change much? I don't know, but, um, Craig thought it'd be nice just to get it hauled in now while they're hauling and get it done and completed with so they're ready in the spring. So, we kind of want to look at maybe just getting it ordered, put it, you know, increasing our amount and getting it in here. So, so just to let you know, I'll put that on our next agenda that maybe we can take some action on. So I'll give you a heads up on that.
And where are we with bid laws?
Yeah, because we, we bid that by quantity. So we, they just bid so much a ton and so we can, because we did bid it out, you know. Okay?
Good question on that.
This is, this is an agenda item here, but.
I don't know, it's $13?
Few bills.
It's only $13, so we can spend it, can we?
Well, we don't have this in our budget. You could, you can if it was in our budget, but we'll have to take this out of general because we're over the sports conference.
You can buy it if you want. Yeah, I'm overture. Get your other bucket.
All right, perfect. Karen, we've got your report. Any updates to your report or things to know?
Questions?
Any questions? Karen? Thank you, Karen. And your report, Teresa?
I'll just try to speed this along too, unless you have questions. I only have one thing to add. Um, the fireworks didn't go off with Homewood Town Christmas because of the high winds. So, you know, for safety reasons, they didn't shoot them off. And so, um, they're working with the company. They can reschedule them for December 19th at 7:00 PM. So, um, they're just wondering, it's, you know, it's part of their application that we prove this approve. It's just the date's changing with this. So, I guess Lisa Hovick was wondering if, um, council's all okay and just get a consensus from you if it's okay for them to go ahead and have the fireworks company do the fireworks on the 19th at 7 o'clock and they'll try and advertise that and shoot that out to people. Does anyone have any issue with that? Can't do any motions on the agenda, but she just. That's, that's one of the few openings the company has. So hopefully the board will cooperate that night and they will do a fireworks display for the city, so.
Sunday? So, how, how are we gonna get the bird out?
They're gonna try to push it out on social media and.
Same way to get it out for Homewood Town Christmas, huh?
So it'll, it'll just be able to shoot fireworks out?
Hey, yep. We can do the fireworks display. Look for them that night on the 19th and.
I mean, they already, I mean, even on the day of and, yeah, since then, they've put out a future date, we're gonna do our fireworks two weeks, basically.
It's always just making sure.
They didn't want us to be surprised why there's a fireworks show. That there wasn't, you know, that wasn't within the application. They didn't want us to be surprised by the fact.
Why fireworks went off the stage, so. One's an embrace, but, so. I'll let her know.
There are a few citizens who would probably prefer a personal phone call to say, lock down your dog.
Here it comes.
Here it comes.
All right.
So, okay, Helen.
Any other questions for Teresa's report?
Notice we're having a Christmas party. Mark your calendars, January 14th. And the invite will come out. So, for you, so, give me a heads up.
Good, thank you for that, Karen. All right. And Hugh? And right back to you, Teresa. We're gonna go back to old business. We've got insurance quotes to review.
Okay. So in your packet, um, as you requested, we, um, contacted, um, Put Off Insurance for Live Bank Insurance. Um, we also did State Farm, but they were unable to meet our current insurance needs. So they pulled their quotes and, uh, we currently are with the South Dakota Municipal Pool. So we have Put Off Insurance for Live Bank Insurance and the South Dakota Municipal Pool. I did a breakdown, a total of what those quotes are for comparison for you. Um, you can see in the packet, Put Off Insurance is the cheapest, um, followed by South Dakota Municipal League and then, um, Live Bank is the most expensive one. Um, with the pool, we've been with them quite a few years now, I think eight, nine years, probably maybe in 10 years. Um, we haven't had any issues or problems with them, so they've been good to work with. Um, prior to that, we were with Put Off Insurance. He has a local agent. Um, Jeremy had asked me, the credits that are showing up on the pool, basically, we get credits for, um, having a low, um, um, what is that ratio? What's the low loss ratio? That's what I wanted to say, a lower loss ratio. You know, we don't have very many claims, so we get, we get a credit for having a low loss ratio. And then, um, uh, renewing in a timely fashion, we get all our paperwork into them within a certain date and so they give us credit for, for giving those in earlier.
They're the same kind of thing with the Put Off or them doing that, or is there that map?
They didn't indicate that, but yeah, so. They did, um, both Put Off and Live Bank got a copy of our declaration page. It says, I want to quote exactly as this. So we got apples to apples and, um, same amount of coverage, you know, same amount of deductibles and so.
But the municipal league's got another million dollars worth of umbrella, isn't it, and Put Off?
No, the umbrella liability of Put Off and Brokaw added was to bring it up to the $2 million that we have with the municipal league. So, so that's why they have those.
So that was the, Dave, Dave was another, that's what it costs for additional one million.
Right, right. Because they both were able to do the $1 million, but to get to the $2 million that we have with the league, that's what the umbrella liability is for that they added. So, we're comparable.
Apples to apples and pay that claim. And I said that tongue in cheek because.
Ultra.
There's so many different insurance policies that you, but yeah, we're just looking at it on face value. It's, it's apples to apples.
Yeah, yeah. And, and they did submit, and I did put all that in the table, but it is apples to apples. It's the same deductible, it's the same coverage for each of the ones.
This is used for work comp. Is that a state, is this a work comp? Is that a state funded?
Yes.
Deal as well?
Yep.
Karen, have any motions?
Motion to approve, motion to approve the quote for insurance as provided by Continental Western and Put Off Insurance.
One second. Discussion?
Very. Fees for leaving the municipal league?
No, when we first got on with municipal league, you had to be with them five years otherwise there was a percentage you wouldn't get back. We've surpassed that timeframe, so.
Any other questions? All right, vote. Burnham?
Yes.
Montan?
No.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yep.
Thank you for having him on, folks. Welcome, my honor. Okay.
Painful. Insurance is painful.
So that's for our city, right?
All right, next item we got on the agenda is our, we're basically our community board for the Park Recreation Board. Um, had plenty of visits and had a short meeting with all of these individuals and talked through getting that Park Recreation Board put together. Um, the main thing I was looking forward with that is to get good diversity of opinions and thoughts and even age groups to be able to have some, some good diversity there. One of the other pieces we wanted was some representation from the Bike Trail Committee and representation from Hartford Air Sports and Rack, somebody who's had some experience with that group anyway. Um, and all that. So I'll quick run through these, but, um, these are requirements for that board. So what we do with them is I'd make, um, I can list them all or I can go through them separately, but I'll just kind of run through them here quickly and so you know what you're looking at. Um, we'll be looking at Troy Larson, um, Josh Mulder, I love that. Josh Mulder, Gail Walker, Matt Evans, and Callie Tusha. Um, the five people on that board, they would get started at the beginning of next year here in January. And, um, we'd also have, to round out that seven person board, we'd have, I think Craig kind of knows already, but city staff, it'd be Craig, Craig from, from the work side of things on there. And then, um, and then I'll be having discussions with all of you. Our paperwork also has a council person on there. I didn't, I'm not making a recommendation on that to matter or nomination on that part tonight, which is, it's a community, I think, so. What, um, those are the folks that I'm nominating on there. Um, what I would look for is, we can go through these separately if you want to. It's typically how we do it for P and Z. Um, in case there's one of them you want to take off or not agree for anything along those lines. So, any discussion on that, just start by those?
How long do you need?
Great question. They are, so they're three-year terms. These, these first couple rounds of it, we would have, I have to look on there again. We would, yeah. One of them is a one-year term. Troy Larson was asked for that because he's going to be, he wants to help get it going and get it started. Um, but his plan is to move, um, mostly out to Madison area here in the next year or two. So. So he would, he would like that. Um, Callie Tushen is also indicated to be a shorter term, one, a two-year term, um, if possible. She would, she'd be interested in that one. Um, and then I believe the remainder are three-year terms. Do you have a ready plan yet, Teresa?
Yeah, so, um, during the first year, so one board member from the public will have a one-year term. Two board members from the public will have two-year terms and two board members will have a three-year term. So basically, I think I'll need to appoint one for a one-year term, two for a two-year term and the other two for the three-year term.
So what we do in that case, Josh is also indicating a shorter term, just in case. So we got Troy Larson, a one-year term, Callie Tushen and Josh Mulder, two-year terms. Gail Walker and Matt Evans is three-year.
There's our next term candidate after Troy.
Oh, no.
Ready to go. So if I have any motions to approve these, these as presented, great. Or if you want to walk through them individually, make sure you can.
How many promotions do you approve as presented? Second. Arden's got it for two.
Which one was it?
Arden for second. Arden.
He, he as presented. So what Jeremy told me, so they're all of us.
One bell's moved.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, O'Boe? O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
And Jones?
Yes.
All right. How about that one? We got lots, guys. All right, so election dates and our new business. So Teresa's done some research and one of the things that came up, and Keel I think you rounded up at one point, was the possibility of moving the election date to coincide with what the school district does out there. So Teresa's done some background work on that.
Yeah, we, we brought this up at Elect Shiva School, wondering why, you know, we couldn't hold them together. And, um, you know, there's a few things that I knew we need to change in ordinance, which there is a couple of spots we would have to do, a couple of ordinances as far as appointment times with that. Um, you know, so that would have to be a change. You know, I kind of just put in my reports some things to kind of think about when we do it. Um, obviously the convenience for the public would be the, the biggest advantage of it is that they have one day and one spot to go to. But, you know, there's other things to look at as well. You know, the school having their election in June works perfectly for them because that's when their fiscal year runs. It runs from July 1st to the next. So they're starting right then. Our fiscal year follows the calendar year. So, you know, if we, my biggest concern, and, you know, I'm sure you, you read through what I listed, but my biggest concern is about bringing on a new council member right before budget. Um, because if we have our election in June, they will start in July. We are asking them to vote on the city's budget in August. And so, and that is set by state statute. We can't change that. So, I mean, I think, you know, it's not... To me in my mind, that doesn't give, you know, we could possibly look at a whole new board next year. I mean, you know, with every seat up, you're, you're, that does not give enough training or time to allow somebody to come in to, to learn the inner workings of the city, especially the financials of the city, and have them vote for the citizens on that. So I guess that's my concern with that. Um, there's some hoops to jump through. They are, like I said, the convenience and having one day, one location for the citizens is great. It won't be any cost savings because we still have to have two separate ballots, two separate election boards. You know, um, we got to do our own notice publications. They got to do their own. So there's no combined cost savings in it whatsoever. So really, we're looking at the convenience factor of it. And I guess we just need to weigh out, is it worth it or not? And what is in the best interest of the citizens for Hartford, you know, in the long run, I guess there. So.
Any input from the school board member present?
I got, we got each full member present, so, yes.
Hopefully better order turn on.
They may not do that, yeah.
I mean, I'm saying they can get it, but that'd be my only... Like, imagine like guaranteed, but...
And I'm assuming, and I have an assessment still, but I'm assuming our combined is just gonna be for their, you know, for the people in Hartford, you're still gonna have to have somebody at the, the Wall Lake Township and somebody over in Humble. So that doesn't help those two locations at all. So really, you're looking at just this area. So.
You guys want to move up your election?
Yeah, you guys want to move your election?
There's gonna be confusion regardless because some group's gonna have to go to a different location and, I don't know.
Yeah, there's gonna be a little confusion, you know, maybe after we start, but it, you're still gonna have... It, this isn't gonna be the one place for the school to come and vote. They still gonna have different locations for voting, you know. I think it missed here, so.
I think we did our good bill things, like the line and all. I looked. There you go. My opinion. I'm not favoring looking at it, I guess.
Nor mine.
All right, do we have any motions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I believe we're looking for a motion to go into a session for regular personnel. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right. So, O'Boe?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
All right, aye.
Any opposed?